Good morning, welcome to the June 10, 2025 regularly scheduled land use meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Gwen Myers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. O gracious heaven, Father, we come to you with a sad heart. We've just heard and learned that Councilwoman Gwen Henderson has passed away. We know, Father, that this life that we live from day to day, we thank you for everything that you've allowed us to do. Just yesterday morning, Councilwoman was, we were together as she was talking with the youth of the city of Tampa and was going out to tour east Tampa after the meeting, and you called her home, and we said, "Thank you. She's lived the life that you wanted her to live." Now, Lord, I ask that you would bless this meeting, bless all the applicants who have submitted an application that we will be discussing your business this morning. I ask that you give each board member traveling grace back home, and our staff who would share the information with us, you would do the same with them. These blessings I ask in your holy name, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Thoughts and prayers out to Councilwoman Henderson's family. Mr. Grady, more review changes the agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. We do have a number of changes on the agenda, so in addition to the published withdrawals and continuances beginning on page three of the agenda, we have the following changes of the agenda. First change is on page five, item B1, rezoning PD 24-1155. The apping is requesting a remand of this application in the July 21st, 2025 zoning hearing, master hearing at 6:00 PM. Next change is on page 10 of the agenda, item E4, PRS 25-0664. Condition 5 is being modified to clarify the maximum building height as follows. Maximum building height shall be less than 35 feet. Currently, it says it shall be 35 feet, at maximum 35 feet. The next change is on page 12, the agenda, agenda page 12, item F2, major mod application 24-1141. The apping is requesting a remand of this application in the July 21st, 2025 zoning hearing, master hearing at 6:00 PM for the purpose of removing three uses from the list of prohibited uses. The next change is on page 13 of the agenda, item F3, rezoning PD 24-1231. The apping is requesting a continuance of this application in the July 22nd, 2025 zoning hearing, BSC Land Use Meeting at 9:00 AM. The next change is on page 14 of the agenda, item F5, major mod application 25-0133. Condition 1 is being modified to prohibit additional uses in the planned development as follows, and basically the three additionally, additional uses being added, restrictions of synagogues over three-in-one seats, membership organizations, and general indoor/outdoor recreational uses. Those are additionally restricted uses within the PD in condition one of the zoning conditions for that item. And the final change is on page 14, item F6, rezoning PD 25-0261. A rise agency review comment sheet from translation review has been added to correct excrevnisure and the trip and general analysis in the table showing trip generations for existing approved uses. Basically, the uses were incorrectly identified and assigned to the trips, and so it was corrected to, to correctly identify those related to the trips. No change in the overall trips is really all this changing, and it's just excrevnisure and identification of the uses assigned to those trips. That's, that's all the changes to the agenda.
I carry a motion to approve the changes.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Winstall, sign. Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote and change the agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, and prior to the board taking action on the consent agenda, the board needs to provide an opportunity for public comment for B13 and B14. Is anyone here who wishes to speak to either B13 or B14? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Second. Motion, Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, so anyone here for a B item? The application's been approved. At this time, if you're planning on testifying today, would you please stand, raise your right hand so the clerk can swear you in?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, you may be seated.
Okay. Mr. Grady, want to introduce first E item?
Here's the first item, is gen item E1, PRS application 25-0236. This is a request for a minor modification to a 9.7 acre planned development that's located on the east side of Boyce Souaut Road, north of North, North Mobley Road. The request is to modify the PD. The PD currently has approval for a private stable, single-family home and accessory dwelling. The changes are addressing the single-family dwelling to increase the size from 700, 900 square feet and to modify the location to move it more internally to the project. Staff is recommending approval and we're available for any questions, thank you.
Right, is applicant here? Applicant for E1 here? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Reschedule to the next meeting.
Mr. Gormly, feel that's appropriate action?
Yes, sir, that'd be appropriate.
Okay, now we have a motion to
Second.
Continue this to the next, next land use meeting by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Winstall, please accord your vote on E1.
Meeting will be July 12th at 9:00 AM.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, E2?
Next item of agenda, item E2, PRS 25-0573. This is a request for a minor modification to
Sorry, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, sorry, misstated. July 22nd will be the continuance date for, for E1, correcting the record.
Thank you.
Again, Commissioners, the next item of agenda, item E2, PRS 25-0573. This is a minor modification to a portion of a planned amendment located in the Wyom area, east of US 301. Commissioners, the request is this, this parcel when it was, was approved last year as part of amendment to the larger PD, which is known as Berry Bay, which is shown in this plan, basically was in the WVR2 plan category. That plan category has implementing regulations that require certain specific development standards and also provision of community benefits. Last year, the, recently, the board adopted a modifications to add, to include this area in the urban service area and also designate a res four, so it may no, be, no longer be subject to WVR2 designation. Therefore, this request is to modify the development standards to remove those requirements, development standard requirements associated with WVR2, and also remove any community benefit requirements, also search for those regulations. I would note that the, the res, the res four comprehensive plan amendment and the expansion of the urban services are not effective yet, so there is a condition has been added clarifying that if the board approves this PRS application today, that this PRS will not be effective until such time as the, those two comprehensive plan amendments become effective. Staff is recommending approval and we're available for any questions, thank you.
All right, applicant here?
Good morning, thank you for the record. Isabel Albert with HAB 1000 North Ashley Drive. Just going to be very quickly, the staff presented well. Again, this is just to amend the, to, to reflect the new land use category, but it's also going to be developed like the rest of the Berry Bay that was originally approved prior to the WVR2, so it's just going to be a cohesive development. I'm here if you have any questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any proponent testimony? Anyone in opposition? Can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote on E2.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
E3?
Commissioners, next item is gen item E3, PRS application 25-0655. This is a request of modification of the PD containing the mosaic Fossum disson stack. The request, Commissioners, is to increase the temporary stack height from 264 to 275 to provide for additional storm water and process water attainment on the property as part of the hurricane season. Staff is recommending approval and we're available for any questions, thank you.
Applicant here?
Good morning, Commissioners. Vanette Godelia with Sterns Weaver Miller for the Mosaic Company. We're at 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2100. We have nothing to add to the record at this time, but we are available for questions.
All right, thank you. Anyone in support of the application? Anyone in opposition? Can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion, Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote on E3.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
E4?
Next item is gen item E4, PRS application 25-0664. This is a request for a minor modification to a planned development that's located, that's located on the north side of Fowler Avenue, east of I-75 and the bypass canal. I think this PD is currently approved for a mini warehouse facility. This current plan is for a number of buildings in this, in a single-family, a single-story height. The request is to combine the entitlements into one single structure and provide for a multi-story building, therefore they're increasing modification of the site plan and the maximum height to accommodate this change and also re clothing, relocating the access point further east. Staff is recommending approval and we're available for any questions.
All right, applicant here? Good morning.
Alex Shaler, 400 North Ashley Drive. Staff covered everything I had in my presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thanks. Anyone in support of the application? Anyone in opposition?
Good morning. The Sterling Heights community right next to the property in question, we're just concerned if there would be any access through our
Ma'am, can you please state your name for the record?
Oh, Jeanette Hernandez. We were concerned if they were going to use the access, like go through our community for an exit or an entrance, since we're right up against it, because it said, you know, the location of access says Fowler Avenue, but we just wanted to know for sure that that's the way they'll be going in and out. We don't have any objections to anything else.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Adam, can you answer that, or?
Commissioner, ma'am, the access for this project will be directly to Fowler Avenue, so there'll be no access through any other road or through your community.
Wonderful, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming down. Okay, applicant need to, you have a chance for rebuttal? I don't know if you need to say anything.
I'm okay, yeah. The access has shifted slightly east on Fowler, but still just Fowler Avenue's the only access, so thank you.
Great, thank you. All right.
Move approval.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Winstall, please accord your vote on E4.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
E5?
Commissioners, next item is gen item E5 is PRS application 25-0665. This is a request for a modification of a 7, 7.4 acre parcel located within a larger PD. The request is to make, it'll make the allowance for the option for a cell tower within this parcel. The parcel is currently developed with a church. The, the cell tower would be located in the northeast portion adjacent to the existing wetland. It will be located minimum 250 feet from the southern boundary and where there's single-family homes and 400 feet from the western boundary where there's single-family homes. The cell tower is also proposed to be camouflage with a monopine type structure. Base, staff is recommending approval and we're available for any questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is applicant here? Good morning.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. Ann Pollack with Trenton Law, 200 Central, St. Petersburg, Florida. Just going to run through some quick slides to give you a little better idea of what we're doing. So this request is just to add the wireless communication support structure as an allowed use on parcel A1. It's already approved as an office tract for 53,000 square feet of BPO uses. There is a church on the property and the church is not proposing to move at this time. This shows you generally where we're locating it in the PD. And this is a close-up, where you can see the yellow is basically the general location of where the tower would go, and parcel A1 is identified there. The reason for this request is that there is another tower that is about half mile away, located on Providence West Park. It is under a lease with Hillsborough County, and Hillsborough County has decided not to renew that lease. So the tower will be decommissioned, and it will cause a significant gap that mobile carriers need to fill. We believe that there may be three or four carriers on there, and there really are only four big carriers that have cell tower, have cell service, so it could be a pretty dramatic limitation once the tower's gone. In this picture, you can see on the, along Bloomingdale Avenue on the south, it's, hopefully you can see it closely, the little pushpin down at the bottom is where our tower is proposed, and the pushpin up at the park towards the top, that is where the existing tower is that's being decommissioned. This is a cell coverage propagation map. This is just relating to T-Mobile. It doesn't relate to the loss in coverage that would come from AT&amp;T and all the others. But you can see with the existing tower, pretty green and, and full, after the tower's decommissioned, there will be a large gap, and with the new proposed tower, all that gets filled in, and so, and again, that's just for one carrier, but there would be other carriers that would also need to come to the new tower. Consistent with the comp plan, it meets the R6 requirements, which are to allow mixed develop, mixed-use development. This PD has been around since 1983 and is a pretty strongly mixed-use development, located in urban service area. It meets the 4.13.1 on telecommunications facilities. It will, when it's approved, comply with state and federal law and be compatible with the surrounding uses, and it won't obstruct military and airport operations. We've already submitted our FAA determination of no hazard to air navigation into the file. We feel it's compatible with the area. Again, the existing PD is mixed-use. The parcel is zoned for office, but is used for a church. Surrounding uses to the north are commercial and multifamily. To the east is conservation area and more commercial and office to the, the churches to the west and residential to the south. It will fill that gap and will benefit residents, and part of the reason that the church is doing this is in order to gain another source of income so that they can actually stay there and continue providing their services to the community. So that potentially leads to the opportunity to avoid having the office development come in in the future, which could create a greater impact to the residents nearby. The conditions of approval require that the setbacks be at least 250 feet from the tower to the south boundary and 400 feet on the west boundary. The tower is generally tucked into the northeast corner where it closes to the trees and the wetland area. We will be required to have a 10-foot buffer and type B screening around the base of the facility, so all those pieces at the bottom won't be seen, and it is required to be camouflaged by a monopine design, which means it looks as close to a tree as it can look, which is presumed compatible for PDs. The height will be 155 feet, and traffic is negligible. We expect six to eight trips per year. And as Brian explained, this is only the approval to potentially allow the use. We would still have to go through the conditions of approval and meet section 6.11.29, which requires a whole, another set of review by the county as part of the permitting process. We are also removing the condition relating to widening of Bloomingdale. This is related to transportation having changed its plans, so they don't need that. And if the, if the church does actually leave and relocate and an office development come in, we would have to use the driveway that is further east on the property. So we have no objections, we feel it's compatible, and we've had no, we had one neighbor call, daycare, just to check what we were doing, but haven't heard from any other neighbors. So with that, I would respectfully request your support. Thank you so much.
Anyone in support of the application? Anyone in opposition? Have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion, Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote on E5.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you so much.
E6?
Commissioners, next item is gen item E6, PRS application 25-0670. This is a request for a modification to two parcels within the Windthorpe PD, which is located on the south side of Bloomingdale Avenue, east of Providence and west of Watson Road. These two parcels are located in the northeast corner of the PDs, near the intersection of Watson Road and Bloomingdale Avenue. Commissioners, the request to modify permitted uses within those two parcels. The northernmost parcel, the request is to add a, a specific general indoor/outdoor recreational service concerning a simulated golf facility, and then the parcel further to the, to the south and closer to Watson Avenue, the request is to add options to do either single-family detached or single, or attached townhomes to the parcel. Staff is recommending approval and we're available for any questions.
Okay, applicant here?
Thank you, good morning. For the record, Isabel Albert with HAB 1000 North Ashley Drive. Again, staff did an excellent job presenting the application, the request, and just to also say that we're not changing any conditions, are not increasing any entitlements or anything like that, so I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any proponent testimony? Anyone in opposition? Can we have a motion?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Winstall, please accord your vote on E6.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
E7?
Commissioners, gen item E7 is CDD 25-0525. Petition emerged of Belmont and Belmont II Community Development Districts. The petition was submitted by the Belmont and Belmont II CDDs to merge the two CDDs. The merged CDD to be named, the Belmont Community Development District would encompass approximately 866 acres and is located south of Big Ben Road, east of I-75, west of US 301, and north of Bullfrog Creek Reserve. No objections to the pro-CDD review by reviewing agencies. Staff finds the application meets the requirements of Chapter 190 Florida Statutes to merge the two community development districts and recommends approval. We're available for any questions, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to E7? All right, can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote on E7.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
F items?
Commissioners, the first F item is F1, rezoning PD 24-1013. This is a request to rezone a 2.5 acre parcel that's located east of the intersection of Baum River View Road and Rodine Road on the north side of Rodine Road. The request is to rezone from AS1 to a planned development allowed for 13,000 square feet of restricted CG uses. Included with those restrictions are operating hours for the various restricted uses. It will provide co-required buffering and screening, and also in addition to address transportation, there is a transportation trip cap regarding the number of trips that can be generated by this project as part of build-out and turning movements were restricted to ride and ride out only. Based on the surrounding development pattern, which includes commercial uses to the media that's south and west, staff is recommending approval, and we're available for any questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is applicant here? Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Patricia Ortiz. I'm with Ortiz Planning Solutions, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant for this petition. Staff did a very good job of outlining the request, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any proponent testimony? Anyone in opposition? Planning Commission?
Thank you, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located within the residential one, future land use category. It is in the urban service area, and the subject property is located within the limits of the Riverview Community Plan and the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. The proposal meets the intent of future land use element Objective 16 and its accompanying policies that require new development be compatible to the surrounding neighborhood. In this case, the surrounding land use pattern is comprised mostly of single-family residential uses with some vacant lands like commercial and daycare uses in the immediate area. To enhance compatibility with the surrounding residential development pattern, conditions for the proposed planned development will note that the eating establishment will be limited to one sit-down restaurant with an outdoor seating area located in the northwestern end of the strip center. The banquet hall will operate inside the building only, and there will be hours of operation for each use as outlined in the proposed conditions of approval. Future land use element policy 16.2 states that gradual transitions of intensities between land uses shall be provided for as new development is proposed and approved through the use of professional site planning, buffering, and screening tech of professional site planning, buffering, and screening techniques, and also the control of specific land uses. There should be a gradual transition of intensities between the different land uses, given the residential uses that are around the subject site. There will be a 20-foot setback and a type-B buffer along the eastern portion of the property line, and a 10-foot setback type-A buffer along the western property line. Future land use element Policy 16.5 directs development of higher-intensity non-residential land uses to areas that are restricted to locations that are external to neighborhoods and developing neighborhoods. Given the more intensive uses being located on the northwestern portion of the site and the operating characteristics, the proposal meets this associated objective and policies. The subject site also meets commercial locational criteria as established under Objective 22 of the future land use element. The closest qualifying intersection is Rodine Road and Baum Way Mama Road, which is about 440 feet away from the subject site and falls under the 660-foot requirement. Therefore, the proposed planned development is consistent with this policy direction. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed planned development consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and that's subject to the conditions that are proposed by Development Services. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's request for a rezoning to the PD zoning district for the development of a 13,000-square-foot shopping and office center. The property is 2.5 acres in size, currently zoned AS1 and designated residential one by the Conference of Plans. The applicant has agreed to zoning conditions which limit the possible commercial general land uses on-site and hours of operation. Testimony in opposition was provided at the ZHM from an adjacent property owner who had concerns about drainage and possible flooding, as well as transportation impacts. County staff testified in response that the applicant will provide road improvements to Rodine Road, and that the project will be reviewed and required to adhere to the county's stormwater technical manual at the development review process. The zoning hearing master concluded that the rezoning request to PD for the development of a shopping and office project is compatible with the area, given the limitations of uses and hours agreed to by the applicant. The zoning hearing master also found that the request is consistent with the Land Development Code and the Conference of Plan, and recommended approval.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion Commissioner Wollstill, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote on F1.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
Ms. Grady, next item?
Commissioners, the next item then is Gen. item F4, rezoning PD 24-1311. The request is to rezone a 2.11 acre parcel. That's currently zoned commercial neighborhood. It's located on the east side of Jackson Springs Road, on this, at the corner of Robinhood Drive and Jackson Springs Road in Town and Country area. Again, the request is to rezone from commercial neighborhood to PD to allow for 37 townhomes based on the, over the future land use classification of RES 20 and existing CN zoning. Staff did find the request to modify this to allow for 37 townhomes compatible with the surrounding development pattern. Planning Commission found it consistent with the plan, and the hearing officer recommended approval. We're available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The applicant here? Please come forward. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Delip Agawa, representing 8704 Jackson Springs LLC. The staff did a tremendous job, and we did comply with all the rules and regulations that were needed. We did a traffic study, and everything was compatible with what the county needed. I'm here for, to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone in support of the application? Anyone in opposition? All right, please come forward. You have a total of 10 minutes. So anyone want to speak here? Good morning, sir.
My name is Wayne Ballard. I live at 8521 Robinhood Drive, directly across the street from this proposal in April, when we were here for the meeting. At one hour, 17 minutes, and 55 seconds into the meeting, the applicant stated under oath that there were no trees with an 18-inch DVIH. I have photographs that prove otherwise. The one across the street is 38 inches. That's twice the size allowed by the state. Another tree I took a picture of was 34 inches. That's just two of the many trees on this property that are slated to just be erased. We've lived there for 35 years. Being zoned commercial neighbor means that they have to be respectful, any commercial going in, of the neighbors that live here. This is not respectful to the neighborhood or the neighbors that live in this neighborhood. So I'm asking, as a neighbor, to let this neighborhood be a neighborhood and not put 37 two-story townhomes in my front yard, because that's where it's going to be. The traffic study, not sure where that was done, but Robinhood Drive is barely a two-lane road. Two cars can barely pass each other on this road. So 100 and however many cars are going to be going up and down this road, essentially in my driveway is going to be a nightmare for us. I would like to retire here and live out the rest of my life in peace and quiet and not have whatever this is going to be here. Single-family homes, totally acceptable, have no problem with that, detached. Single-family homes would be welcome, but 37 townhomes in your face? You wouldn't want this in your driveway, in your front yard, and none of you would want this. So as a neighbor, I'm asking you to please let this neighborhood be your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
My name is John Canales. I also live at 8521 Robinhood Drive. This past week, the property across the street was finally clean, at least part of it, since the first hurricanes hit. It was been, has been a mess, and surprisingly, this week alone, I have actually watched yesterday, a U-Haul pulled into that property, and beds and stuff started pulling in. So I'm finding it unusual that all of a sudden this is happening. So it makes it looks good for what we've already had to put up with. One of the other options I'm going to talk about, what Wayne said, was about the trees. Tampa Electric representative came to our property and let us know one of our trees do have to be removed. Upon talking with this individual from Tampa Electric, and she is qualified for the trees, pointed out six of the trees on that property that qualify for not to be touched, and they want to completely wipe out everything across the street. Property around the corner has taken over 15 years, and they're still working on it after they stripped it, which means my front yard is going to be an empty bed so I can listen to the assisted living facility that touches that property. I do would love to see some kind of housing going on over there, if it's commercial. These people knew, when they bought this property, what the zoning was, and I respectfully say, let's keep it that way. Flooding is another issue. We, I was standing in water, and there's a drainage ditch across the street from our house that belongs on that property. That water was in my front yard, and my next-door neighbor got flooded. Adding 37 pieces of apartments on there, they have to lift that due to our zoning area. It's a flood zone. It, we're nine feet above sea level. That's it. So this is going to be a big issue for us homeowners, and I'm going to stop due to the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Would anyone else like to speak? Good morning.
My name is Doris Udall. I live at 8627 Jackson Springs Road, at a home that has been there since 1914, and my family's owned it for 67 years. And this is an abomination, and I hope y'all have read the letters that I wrote. We'll have more information in them than what I'll give here today in this testimony. But this property is an ecosystem into itself with several protected species living there. Mr. Edgerwall stated at the meeting at the zoning board that Hillsborough County came out and didn't find any wildlife. I've asked for copies of these reports, as well as more in-depth on the traffic report. The traffic report seems to cite Burger King and Hillsborough Memorial, which is nearly a half a mile away. The so-called Busy Medical Center that was cited is a nursing home that sits down the road, 500 feet into the woods. Again, as Wayne and John mentioned, the grandfather oaks, there's other vegetation and that. But the flooding, my front yard sits just 29 feet from where these proposed townhome walls will be of the actual buildings, which will tower three stories high. And I know my yard during the storm surge had three feet of water in the front yard, and that property flooded. Every year, usually during the summer, it gets standing water and floods. The thing that nobody has mentioned, it's only 400 feet from Rocky Creek. Nobody's mentioned that. Rocky Creek is a tidal creek out to the bay. This is, this is flood, flood, flood. We're looking at increased traffic. We're looking at light pollution, noise pollution, perhaps crime. We're looking at townhomes looming over our yards with people looking down into our yards, denying us our rights of enjoying our property as we have for decades. I have for 67 years. And I'm asking you today, each of you, you have our fate in your hands. This is something you can do, and I'm asking you to stand up and say, no. I'm asking you to be just. I'm asking you to make this right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. Our deputy sheriffs, thanks them for their service. My name is Thomas Adams. I live in Rocky Creek, not Town and Country. This area was the first neighborhood in that area, way before Pat Acres, Woodbridge, Morgan Woods, Town and Country, Baycrest. It was there prior to all that being there. This gentleman has come into this area, purchased a piece of land, and he's wanted to develop it with this catastrophic monstrosity. We live in a single-family residential neighborhood. My wife was born into that neighborhood in 1955. She has never left that neighborhood. We live right around the corner from her home of residence. This place is going to be an eyesore for the people that have, was born and raised there. I moved into the creek in 1960 and have never left. Made it my home, and I'm proud of it. We don't need more congestion, more clutter, more noise, more rubbish. And I would like to applaud Commissioner Cohen. We had a town hall meeting a while back. He came in and he heard our plight. There's a lot of stuff been going on. We don't need this kind of dwelling in our residential neighborhood. I would greatly appreciate every Commissioner's consideration to lean on it. It may look good from your front door. It doesn't look good from my front door. We don't want it, and we would appreciate everybody to really lean on it. And thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. The applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal.
Good morning. I mean, most of the questions I did answer regarding 18 inches. I never said 18 inches. I said 18 DVIH, which is the pi of 3.14 times the number of inches. Species, we did a survey on the property. We did a land survey. We did a soil survey, and we didn't find anything. As far as the three-story townhouses, we will be only doing two, and we are at least two or three years away. This is something that's not going to happen today, tomorrow, 2025 or 2026. As far as the U-Haul they're talking about, I did mention in the last meeting that I'm planning on moving there, and I did move into that house yesterday, in fact, was my first day, and I started living there to get to know the community, get to know the people. And as far as the zoning, there, there is several development going on in the same block. I have another project right next to it, which is in the process of site planning and everything, and right next to it, there is another big development called Kingport Homes, which is about 37 or 38 townhomes. So pretty much when we decided to do this, we took the compatibility that was in that block, and based on that, we made the decision. The other one was, the land is currently commercially zoned, and in fact, we can put up a fast food restaurant or an apartment complex, and a lot of other commercial activity, which will not be compatible with what we currently have in that neighborhood. Since we have single-family homes, we decided to stick with what's out there and do what's out there good for the community, rather than bringing in something that is not compatible. So pretty much when we decided it, it was decided based on the compatibility of the neighborhood and what's currently out there, and based on that, we came to the conclusion that the townhome development will be the best option for this community. That's all I got. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Planning Commission?
Thank you. The subject property is located within the residential 20 future land use category. The site is in the urban service area, and the subject property is located within the limits of the Town and Country Community Plan. The intent of the residential 20 future land use category is to designate areas for high-density residential development. The proposed townhome use is consistent with the uses expected in this planned category. With 37 proposed dwelling units, the density would be 17.5 dwelling units per gross acre, and this density is well within the range that may be considered for this site and is therefore consistent with development that is expected in the residential 20 future land use category. The proposal meets the intent of the neighborhood protection policies outlined in future land use element Policy 16.3, which requires development and redevelopment be integrated with adjacent land uses through the creation of like or complementary uses. The provision of townhomes is consistent with this policy direction, as housing will provide a complementary use to the surrounding residential land use pattern. Policy 16.7 of the future land use element emphasizes an efficient system of internal circulation. The site plan shows a vehicular and pedestrian access onto Robinhood Drive, as well as pedestrian access along Jackson Springs Road, which is consistent with this policy direction. Policy 16.10 emphasizes the importance of density increases being compatible with the existing, proposed, and planned surrounding development pattern. The proposed townhomes will be a maximum of 35 feet in height, and the density will be less than the maximum allowed, which is in keeping with the surrounding residential development near the subject site and is consistent with this policy. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed planned development consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and that's subject to the conditions proposed by Development Services. Thank you.
Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master reviewed the applicant's request for rezoning from the commercial neighborhood zoning district to a planned development zoning district to allow the development of 37 townhomes. The applicant testified that he intends to live in the existing single-family home on site while the project is being developed. No PD variations or waivers are requested. The zoning hearing master found that the existing commercial neighborhood zoning district currently permits a wide range of neighborhood-serving commercial land uses. County transportation staff testified that the proposed 37 townhomes result in a significant decrease in traffic when compared to the worst-case scenario of a land use that is permitted under the existing commercial neighborhood zoning district, which is a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through. Staff commented that the comparison results in a decrease of 8,326 24-hour two-way volume vehicular trips. The zoning hearing master found that the project will adhere to all required buffering and screening standards, and the maximum height of the townhomes is 35 feet, which is the same as the adjacent RSC6 zoning district. The zoning hearing master concluded that the rezoning request to plan development for the development of 37 townhomes is compatible with the area, and that the request is consistent with the Land Development Code and the Conference of Plan, and the zoning hearing master recommended approval.
All right, Commissioner Cohen?
So this, this case is very difficult, because what we have is an existing zoning. I'm, I'm seeing people shaking their heads in the audience about what is permitted to go there now, so I want to ask Mr. Gormly... there now, so I want to ask Mr. Gormly, under a commercial neighborhood designation, which is what's there now, and a residential 20, what, they mentioned, the hearing master talking about the worst-case scenario. What's the worst-case scenario with the existing zoning? Or what, I don't want to say the worst-case scenario. What are some of the scenarios that exist with the existing commercial zoning?
So Commissioners, some of the uses that can go there, as noted in the transportation reports, fast-food uses, convenience stores could be located there, minor motor vehicle repair, there's a whole host of commercial uses. I think what I was hitting there are some of the more intensive ones that could be located on that parcel as a matter of right under the CN zoning.
And just to be clear, when you say as a matter of right, you mean that they could do that without even having to come here for a hearing, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so in the existing commercial zoning that's there now, we lose all control of this property, essentially, and it can be developed. Now, the RES 20 means up to 20 units per acre is what it's zoned for. So this is less than that, but theoretically, what could that mean in a commercial neighborhood context?
So one of the things it could mean is they could request a more, higher density than they're requesting today. They could request up to 42 units of residential. The RES 20 under a rezoning scenario could potentially be a basis to request a higher level of commercial uses, commercial general uses, that would be less restrictive than the current commercial zoning, but they certainly could have a higher density than what is requested today, and it is planned for. Overall, that area has a planning designation that would support that higher density.
So, you know, here's the thing, and I'm truly wrestling with this. I'm hearing what you're saying, but I feel like there's a gamble in voting no, that you're going to get something considerably more intense on that property. And, I mean, I can think of a very solid reason to vote against this, which I think would be that, given the history of flooding in this last storm, and the fact that this is the coastal high-hazard area, that it's a real bad idea to put this type of density in an area that we know is subject to flooding and is going to need to be evacuated in the case of a storm. I can justify that, at least in my view. But there is a very, very big risk in a no vote, and that is getting something that is worse, that is more dense, that is commercial, that is, did you say a convenience store with a gas station? Was that a, or a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through?
Yes, sir.
You may think it's absurd, but it's the reality of what is available as of right without coming here for a hearing. So I'm anxious to hear how other people are going to weigh this, but it's a very, very tough question of what to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you. Just for the members of the audience, we've dealt with this situation so many times where the existing uses people are just unaware of, because it's been there for so long, but not developed. But that doesn't mean that that person, such as stated earlier by our Director of Development Services, which is purely unbiased in these situations, his job is just to follow the laws that are prescribed here in Hillsborough County, which is why they're prescribed this way. And I'm giving, I've seen your heads continue to shake, no, but I want you to understand that this person could absolutely come in and put, if you don't want townhomes next to your front yard view, you could have a commercial concrete paved lot with a gas station. You brought up environmental concerns. It's in the documents, though. I've seen your head shaking, and I know it's frustrating, but this is already approved, and changing this rezoning will remove those much more intensive uses than 37 townhomes. We have a situation going on in the northwest part of Hillsborough, where way back in 2008, the wise words that Commissioner Cohen just gave you, and the community banded together, and they fought a piece of property on it being a light commercial lot with some, like, strip mall-type uses on it. Well, years forward, the legislature passed laws that allowed that lot to go from a light shopping mall use to super-heavy affordable housing, multifamily apartments, about 350 units. Despite that, Commissioner Hagan and I banded together, and we thwarted that effort. But then the very next year, this year, the state's legislature specifically undid the protection that we put forward and reestablished that lot that could have been a much lower intensity. And now that same community that fought against it 17 years ago is hopeful that it's the original one that was applied for in 2008, because that's just the way that land use works. So I think that it is wise words that, while this does not see my deal, it is removing a much more intense use of the property, so I am going to move for approval since I see no one else in the lot.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. Commissioner Wostol, do you have a second? Second. Commissioner Miller, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Cohen voted no.
Okay, next item.
Next item, Commissioner's agenda item F5 is Major Mod Application 25-0133. The request is for a major modification of existing planned development that's located on the northwest corner of 19th Avenue Northwest and US 41, south of Apollo Beach. The request is to modify the entitlements and uses. It's currently permitted 56,000 of commercial neighborhood uses. The request is to actually reduce square footage to 49,000 square feet, but add additional CD uses with restrictions as outlined in the conditions of approval, and as modified as part of the changes in the agenda today. There's also, I would note, there's a trip cap with respect to total number of trips to be utilized as part of development of this parcel, and also different restrictions on turning movements on 19th Avenue. Based on the surrounding development pattern, which has commercial uses north and south of it, staff is recommending approval. Planning Commission found it consistent, and the hearing officer also is recommending approval.
All right, the applicant here. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. For the record, Michael Brooks, 400 North Tampa Street, Suite 1910, Tampa, Florida, 33602. I'm here on behalf of the property owners, and I have with me, as part of the development team, Jose Martinez in the back, and Kathleen Hess, who are with Breakwater Development. Mr. Grady done a good job of explaining. The correction of why we're here today is it's a 2007 planned development. It turns out that as we fast forward to today, and everybody kind of understands what happened in 2000, 2008 to the real estate market, if you fast forward to today, there's roughly two and a half times more open space, floodplain compensation, open area that's required, so the existing PD does not work. Coming back in, essentially with the same type of design, but with reduced square footage, and essentially the same connections to the external roadway network. So with that, I'll just, Bill will answer any questions, and we're not aware of any opposition here in the room today. We did not have any at the ZHM hearing.
All right, thank you. Any proponent testimony? Anyone in opposition? Planning Commission?
Thank you. The subject property is located in the Office Commercial 20 Future Land Use category. The site is in the urban service area, and the subject property is located within the limits of the Ruskin Community Plan and the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. The Office Commercial 20 Future Land Use category allows for the consideration of community commercial-type uses, office uses, mixed-use developments, and compatible residential uses. This Future Land Use category is located to the southwest and east of the subject site, and extends north across 19th Avenue Northwest, along with the Residential 6 Future Land Use category. The proposed modification for a maximum of 49,000 square feet of commercial general uses meets the expected intensity expected in this plan category. The proposal meets the intent of Future Land Use Element Objective 16 and its accompanying policies that require new development be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In this case, the surrounding land use pattern is comprised mostly of residential, light commercial, and heavy commercial uses. The currently approved planned development allows for a mix of commercial and retail use establishments, I'm sorry, entitlements with up to 56,000 square feet of non-residential uses permitted. The proposed modification would decrease the square footage to 49,000 square feet. Goal one of the Ruskin Community Plan wishes to establish a mixed-use, walkable, and pedestrian-friendly town center. The South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan seeks to implement pedestrian pathways in the area. The applicant is providing sidewalks and pedestrian connectivity, along with proposing to construct a trail amenity in the right-of-way adjacent to the subject site. The proposal therefore meets the community plan visions. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed major modification consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to the proposed conditions by Development Services. Thank you.
Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master reviewed the proposed major modification to a planned development that is currently approved for 56,000 square feet of commercial neighborhood land uses. The modification is requested to reduce the total square footage to 49,000 square feet and permit limited commercial general land uses. No PD variations or waivers are being requested. No testimony in opposition was provided at the zoning hearing master hearing, and the zoning hearing master concluded that the proposed modification is compatible with the surrounding development pattern and consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and recommended approval.
All right, can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion, Commissioner Wostol, and second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote on F5.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
F6. Commissioner's next item is End of Item F6, rezoning PD 25-0261. This is a request to modify a parcel that was located on the west side of US 301 north to the intersection of Boyett and Gibsonson Drive. The request is to modify the point acre parcel from commercial general and planned development to allow for a 2,190 square foot bank slash credit union, based on the surrounding development pattern and approved uses that are allowed under the existing approval, which allows for a wider range of more intensive uses than what could be, which is proposed under this PD. Staff does find it's compatible with surrounding development pattern, is recommending approval. Planning Mission found it consistent with the plan, and the hearing officer recommended approval. Will Bill offer any questions?
All right, the applicant here.
Good morning. My name is Angela Halber with Hillwood Henderson, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 3700. I represent the applicant. I think the crux of this is pretty clear. This is two existing parcels, and the request is to zone, rezone both of them to a PD to accommodate a credit union with drive-through facilities. We've received positive recommendations and are here for any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Any proponent testimony? Anyone in opposition? Planning Commission?
Thank you. The subject property is located within the Suburban Mixed Use 6 Future Land Use category. The site is in the urban service area, and the subject property is located within the limits of the Riverview Community Plan, as well as the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. The Suburban Mixed Use 6 designation allows for the consideration of residential, neighborhood commercial, office, and light industrial uses. The category allows for neighborhood commercial at a floor-area ratio of 1.25. The proposed floor-area ratio, or FAR, for the credit union would be 0.06, which is well under the intensity expected in this plan category, and is therefore consistent with the intensity expected in this category. Future Land Use Section Policy 4.4.1 states that any density or intensity increases shall be compatible with the existing proposed or planned surrounding development. When planning the location of new non-residential developments at intersections meeting locational criteria, a transition in intensity of non-residential uses shall be established, which is compatible with the surrounding character of the area. The applicant has proposed the retention of the vegetation and developing a retention stormwater pond, which will create a natural buffer between the credit union and the residential uses to the west. The proposed credit union will also be subject to regular business hours, and given the retention of the natural vegetation and the additional buffering methods, operating hours in existing light commercial uses to the south, the proposed PD is consistent with the policy direction in the Comprehensive Plan as it relates to compatibility. The subject site does not meet commercial locational criteria as established under Objective 4.7 of the Future Land Use Section. The closest qualifying intersection to the subject site is Gibsonson Drive and South US Highway 301, which are more than 1,300 feet away from the subject site. The applicant submitted a request to waive commercial locational criteria requirements based upon the fact that the surrounding development pattern contains commercial uses, the operating characteristics of a credit union use, and the enhanced buffering to improve compatibility concerns. Based upon that rationale, Planning Commission staff recommends the board approve the waiver request. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed plan development consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to the conditions proposed by Development Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master reviewed the applicant's request for a rezoning from planned development and commercial general to planned development zoning district for the development of a bank credit union use. No PD variations or PD waivers are being requested. The existing planned development is approved for business, professional, and health service land uses, and the commercial general zone portion permits a wide array of commercial general land uses. One person testified in opposition during the hearing. Concerns expressed pertain to the existing traffic volumes and the need for traffic-calming measures and sidewalks in the area. In response, the county's Transportation Review Section staff person testified that Rivercrest Drive is substandard, and that the impact of the project would be reviewed at the site development stage if the rezoning is approved. That review could require improvements based on the conditions at that time. The applicant will be required to provide a five-foot-wide sidewalk along the parcel frontage. The applicant's transportation engineer testified that the vehicular average daily trips are reduced by 2,802 trips by the proposed development of the credit union as compared to the currently permitted uses. This data is confirmed in the county's Transportation Agency review comments. The zoning hearing master concluded that the rezoning request to planned development for the development of a bank credit union is compatible with the area. The request is consistent with the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan, and the zoning hearing master recommended approval.
All right, can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion, Commissioner Wostol, and second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote on F6.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, we'll move to the I items.
Commissioner, first one item is I1. This is the monthly status report on local development projects. We did have one new zoning verification request submitted for review since the last month. I would note that it was for a parcel that's currently zoned ASC1 and is not eligible for consideration under the LLA regulations. Other than that, there's been no other additional changes to that report.
Okay, so no questions or comments. Can just have a motion to receive the report?
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Wostol, and second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
I2?
Commissioner's I2, this is a staff report on Land Development Code requirements for standardary sewer facilities, and Mr. Gormly will present this item.
Commissioners, the I2 is a report requested by the board at the last land use meeting dealing with a requirement for wastewater connections in the urban service area. The Comprehensive Plan has a general requirement that new development in the urban service area connect to public water and wastewater. However, it does provide for limited exceptions to that, as set out in the Land Development Code. The Land Development Code had previously implemented exceptions that allowed for one lot to be subdivided into two, or potentially three, with a variance or the similar level of non-residential development, if it were not technically feasible to connect to a wastewater line, which for residential development means that there is a gravity-fed line adjacent to the site. This was the policy for some time. However, in the year 2020, the code was amended to remove the exemption for wastewater connections, and the result of that change is that now any subdivision of land in the urban service area... area requires connection to public wastewater and precludes the use of septic. Since the code change has been in effect and it was effective for any application filed in 2021 or later, we have had numerous experiences with applicants that have come seeking to split one lot into two. A lot of times, it's an existing home that they're looking to cut off a portion and build a new home and have more land than is needed to support the one home, and the wastewater lines in a lot of cases that we've seen are quite a distance away, thousand, 2,000 feet away. And the result from that is that the cost to extend those wastewater lines is actually cost, infeasible for building a home. The cost of extending the line and building the home just doesn't warrant the value that comes from that, from that home. We have, in accordance with the code as it's written now, tell these applicants that there really is no alternative. They either don't subdivide their land or they need to bear the cost of this line extension. In a lot of cases, this line extension would not be, it would be serving just the singular home. We have not had an applicant yet that has taken up that line extension cost. I'll note as well, with the newly expanded urban service area in the South County, we expect more instances of this under the current code language. There, that area has rural, a lot of it has rural-level zoning at this time in larger lots. The wastewater infrastructure in the expanded area would be considerably less than in the existing urban service area. I'll also note that, that the exception does remain in place for water service. It's wastewater service, it does not allow that. The concept of a third lot or third level of impact on a variance has had some challenges in the past as well. I'll note that the intent of that language being in the code was to allow for a consideration of a potential for a third lot. By requiring a variance to that, it puts it into a process that is, that is designed for unique circumstances and a non-self-imposed hardship. What we've seen in some decisions on variances is that those variances are getting denied based on the theory that they don't have to request a third lot, it's a choice they're making and they're creating their own hardship. That kind of rubs against the concept of allowing a third lot on a variance in the code in the first place. I'll offer that for consideration. Last point I'll make on this is that the Land Development Code does require a minimum lot size of half acre for septic development, development on septic, or one acre if it's in a wellhead protection area. So if this policy were to be changed, it would not result in small lots with small clusters of septic tanks together. That half acre minimum size or one acre in wellhead protection area would not be changed. Available for any questions? That concludes the report.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wollstill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just heard from Mr. Gormly, I brought this item because of one of my agriculture friends, but then it opened a door to a myriad of outreach from people that I just didn't know had had so many issues with this over the years. I've been on the side of promoting transitions to our wastewater systems, and I believe that that is the right direction, but I believe that the proper role of government is to promote things, not be a heavy-handed force where there's no opportunities to relief or reasonable use of their property. I definitely disagree with, I didn't know that the zoning Hearing Master had made the determination based off of, that's a different issue that I'll bring up later during the, after the public hearings, to say, well, you're creating the burden yourself because you're voluntarily choosing to subdivide your land is a, is a pretty authoritarian position to take, in my opinion, since it's our own law, but we'll get into that later. I'm told that this requires two public hearings. Most of the outreach that I've gotten is the options that we could direct staff to either amend or revert the current policies to the previous 2020 version, and the, or the option of amending the current version to increase the amount of subdivisions to three, which will cure most of our complaints and remove the variance requirement.
Yes, sir.
Does that essentially take care of the litany of issues that we've had on this?
Yes, sir, that would address the challenges that we have experienced.
And we can and probably will continue as a board to promote transition to our wastewater, our sewer system where it's feasible, but I don't believe that we should have a policy that's offering absolute, absolutely no relief to existing property owners. And that's basically the spirit of that motion, and I believe in the motion. I would need to request the public hearing dates of July the 22nd and August the 12th land use meetings, which have, are both supportable by the Planning Commission and Development Services staff, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so those are my motions, is to either amend the current version, to remove the variance requirement and increase the subdivisions to three, or also that and revert back to the 2020 language, which staff will be able to cure and bring back before the public hearings begin.
I'll second it.
All right, so we got a motion by Commissioner Wollstill, second by Commissioner Miller, and I'd just say, wholeheartedly support this, much needed, and appreciate Commissioner Wollstill bringing this forward. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn our land use meeting, and then we'll commence our Comprehensive Plan Amendment Workshop, and this time I'll pass things over to Planning Commission to introduce the first item.
Thank you, sir. For the record, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. Our first item is item A1, and that will be presented by Ms. Willow Mickey. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Willow Mickey with your Planning Commission staff. I will be briefing HCCPA 25-10, which is located at 6544 County Road 579. This request is a privately initiated small-scale map amendment. It is made up of six parcels that total approximately 15.64 acres. The request is to change the land use designation of these parcels from Residential 1 and Residential 4 to Light Industrial Planned. This plan amendment is part of the April 2025 cycle, located in the rural area and is within the limits of the Tenoda Sasa Community Plan. This is an aerial photo of the site outlined here in pink. The blue line is representing the urban service area boundary, with the east of the line being the rural area, including the site. It is located north of West Pruitt Road, west of Mango Road, and south of Davis Pool Road. Within the vicinity of the site, there are single-family residential and vacant uses to the northwest and south. There are agricultural uses to the northeast and south, and public quasi-public uses to the south. The site is in the Residential 1 and Residential 4 land use category. Res 1 allows for the consideration of agricultural, farms, ranches, residential, neighborhood commercial, offices, and multipurpose projects. Residential 4 allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, neighborhood commercial, office uses, and multipurpose projects. Surrounding land use categories include Res 1 and Res 4 to the north and west of the site, with Res 4 to the south as well. To the east, there is Residential 2 as well as public quasi-public and light industrial planned further to the southeast. The green lines that you see on the map represent the coastal high hazard area. Additionally, I just wanted to mention that the parcel located directly east to the site, which is that yellow block area, was recently adopted to LIP under HCCPA 2426. The request is to change the site to Light Industrial Planned, which allows for the consideration of uses such as agricultural, light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials as the predominant uses, including support offices, warehousing, and retail uses. No residential is allowed under this category. This slide outlines the potential impacts of the requested land use change. Currently, under Res 1 and Res 4, the site can be considered for up to 47 dwelling units and 170,319 square feet of non-residential. The change to Light Industrial Planned would not allow for the consideration of residential uses, but would allow for up to approximately 510,958 square feet of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will result in potential increase in commercial intensity and the introduction of industrial uses. It would eliminate the potential for residential development. That concludes my briefing on this item. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue, so we can go to the next item.
Yes, sir. The next two items, the first one is presented by Ms. Alexis Myers and the second one with, by Mr. Tyreek Royal. They are interrelated. One is a USA expansion and one is a map, proposed map amendment. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2511, located at 6720 Van Dyke Road for the Urban Service Area Expansion. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 21.73 acres. The applicant is requesting to expand the urban service area. This amendment is associated with HCCPA 2512, a request to change the future land use category from Residential 1 to Residential 12. This is the general location map. As I mentioned, this is associated with HCCPA 2512. It is in the rural area and within the limits of the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. It is located south of Van Dyke Road and west of Suncoast Parkway. Here's the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the existing urban service area boundary. Next are the impacts. The proposed amendment would bring 21.73 acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum connection to public water and sewer. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2511. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next item?
Good morning, Tyreek Royal, Planning Commission staff. And today I'll be presenting HCCPA 2512 at 6720 Van Dyke Road. Request is privately initiated small-scale map amendment with approximately 12.79 acres. The request is to change the land use designation from Res 1 to Res 12. The location of the site is in the western portion of unincorporated Hillsborough County. It's a part of the April 2025 cycle in the rural area and within the limits of the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. It's also associated with HCCPA 2511. This is the aerial photo of the site outlined in pink. The urban service area is located by the blue line. It's located south of Van Dyke Road, west of Tobacco Road. Surrounding uses include agricultural to the north, single-family uses to the west and south, and light commercial uses to the east. The site is in the Res 1 Future Land Use category. It allows for the consideration of agricultural, farms, ranches, residential, neighborhood commercial, office, and multipurpose projects. Commercial uses are subject to locational criteria. The applicant is requesting the change of future land use category from Res 1 to Res 12. The Res 12 allows for the consideration for agricultural, residential, neighborhood commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use development. The change from the Res 1 to Res 12 would allow for an increase in development by allowing higher residential density and greater commercial intensity. The density of one dwelling unit per gross acre would increase to 12 dwelling units per gross acre. The commercial intensity would increase from a .25 FAR, or approximately 139,000 square feet, to a .5 FAR, or approximately 278,000 square feet. And that concludes my briefing on this item. I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for the presentation. I don't see anyone in the queue, so we can go to the next, next two items.
Items A4 and A5 are also similar in that one is a map amendment request and one is a USA expansion, so we'll kind of go one right after the other. The first item, A4, will be presented by Ms. Alexis Myers, and the second one will be by Ms. Lillian Linehan. Thank you.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff here again to present HCCPA 2513, located at Dale Mayberry Highway and Holly Lane for the Urban Service Area Expansion. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 24.36 acres. The applicant is requesting to expand the urban service area. This amendment is associated with HCCPA 24, I'm trying, 2514, a request to change the future land use category from Residential 1 to Residential 9. This is the general location map. As I mentioned in the last slide, it is associated with HCCPA 2514. It is in the rural area and within the limits of the Lutes Community Plan. It is located east of Dale Mayberry Highway, south of Holly Lane, and north of Lutes Lake Fern Road. Here is the aerial of the site. The site, the site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the existing urban service area boundary. Next are the impacts. The proposed amendment would bring 24.36 acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum connection to public water and sewer. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2513.
Thank you.
Lillie Linehan with Planning Commission staff, and I will be briefing HCCPA 2514, which is located Dale Mayberry Highway and Holly Lane. This is a privately initiated small-scale map amendment. It is made up of a portion of a parcel that approximately totals 24.36 acres, and the request is to change the land use designation of these parcels from Residential 1 to Residential 9. As previously mentioned, this plan amendment request is in the northern portion of unincorporated county. It is located east of Dale Mayberry Highway, south of Holly Lane, and north of Lutes Lake Fern Road. It is in the rural area and within the Lutes Community Plan, is associated with HCCPA 2513. This is an aerial photo of the site outlined in pink. Within the vicinity of the site, there are single-family residential, quasi-public, public, and institutional, agricultural, and natural uses, and additionally, there's one light commercial use to the south of the site. The site is in the Residential 1 Future Land Use category, which allows for the consideration of low-density residential, rural-scale neighborhood, commercial, and office multipurpose projects. Neighborhood commercial uses are subject to locational criteria. The surrounding land use categories consist of mainly Residential, Residential, Residential 1 and Residential 2, and there is one subdivision further southwest of the site that is within the urban service area that contains a designation of Residential 4 and Neighborhood Mixed Used The request is to change the site to Residential 9, which allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, and neighborhood, commercial, office, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use development uses. This slide outlines the potential impacts of the requested land use change, and currently under the Residential 1, the site can be considered for up to 24 dwelling units or approximately 265,269 square feet of non-residential, subject to locational criteria. The change to Residential 9 would allow for the consideration of up to 219 dwelling units or approximately 530,539 square feet of non-residential uses, and any non-residential development that exceeds the 0.35 FAR must be for office or residential support uses. The proposed amendment will increase the potential residential density and commercial intensity. This includes the briefing for HCCPA 2514, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Commissioner Wollstill?
Thanks. I just want to confirm if this site has any lingering PDs or anything that would quietly make it eligible for live local.
Commissioner, at this time, it appears that that site has agricultural zoning, so that is, that will not...
No PDs are hidden in it?
Correct. There's PDs adjacent to it, but the main bulk of the site is ag-zoned.
Just wanted to make sure, thanks.
Okay, don't see anyone else in the queue, so we're adjourned.